All right, board members, we do have a quorum. I now call to order this meeting of the Budget Committee. So, we're going to have really two parts to this. We're going to have a presentation from budget staff to just kind of review where we are in advance of the superintendent's presentation to the supervisors on March 18th. And we will have time for discussion among ourselves after we receive the presentation. So, should I turn it over to Dr. Garza first or to Ms. Quinn?
Dr. Garza will be doing the presentation, but just to kind of, I'm sure everyone's heard, we do not have a budget from the state. They will be reconvening on March 24th. So, where we are now is that we still don't have a definitive amount from the state as to how much we will be getting from state revenue. So, we will kind of talk about that and give you a quick update as to what the amounts are from the governors introduced to the House budget, to the Senate budget.
Okay, very good. I want to first begin by thanking the team. We've had some extraordinarily busy weeks. And to that point, this team had to work over the weekend to finalize the law documents and even met with me on Saturday morning to get some of those done. So, I do very, very appreciative of Susan Quinn and Kristen and your entire team because I know that you put lots and lots of hours into this work and continue to do so. So, very appreciative. So, that's why some of you received, you received the documents later than we would ordinarily like, but there's just only so much, I guess, we can do. But with that being said, what we're going to be presenting today, you all have seen before, very little of what we're going to be talking about is new. In fact, much of it, we've been talking about for quite some time. But it's just a high-level overview of where we are today and how this might impact the presentation on the 18th. You do have two documents available to you today. I'm going to walk through the PowerPoint, which is relatively short. And then, as we continue to answer questions from the public, from you all, from members of the Board of Supervisors, many, many times those questions have been asked before. But we sense that there are a number of questions that continue to be asked over and over and over again. And that's important, but sometimes I think they're just not at your ready, ready at your fingertips. So, listening to the conversation at the Board of Supervisors meeting last Tuesday and just other conversations we've had with you all, we've attempted working with Ted and Patty to identify some of the real high-level issues that continue to be discussed. And our staff have put together, I think, is a really good resource document for you all, so you could have it right at your fingertips. So, the first thing I'm going to do is walk through the PowerPoint, answer any questions that you might have. And then, we'd like to touch on the high points around some of those key questions that continue to be asked in the resource document. So, that'd be kind of our two-part presentation, if you don't mind. And the crew's going to help me move along. In the fiscal year 15 county advertised overview, you all know that that included a 2%, the 2% increase for the school system, which leaves us with a gap of $63.8 million from that transfer request. And that's the difference between what was asked for and what's currently represented in the advertised budget. The total county revenue increase, and you all saw this in Ed Long's presentation, an increase of $148.2 million of new revenue that was available for allocation, primarily resulting from increases in real estate assessments. Of that transfer, those new revenues, that included $34.3 million for us, which represents about 23% of that new revenue. The transfer increase of $4.8 million in FCPS's debt service represents about 3.2%. And then, of course, you all know nearly 74% of the county's increase in revenue was allocated toward county services. And we do have a side-by-side that you all have been provided, and we do have that yet again for you, represented in that document we talked about in just a little bit. In the, again, continuing in the advertised overview, there was no recommended increase in the real estate tax rate in the advertised budget. The impact in the current budget, county budget, for appraisal values or house property taxes is $332 on average household. And that was due primarily to the increased assessment values. Since 2009, real estate taxes have increased $572 without adjusting for inflation. If you adjust for inflation, those per typical household are $70 less than they were in fiscal year 2009. And all this, by the way, is in the full advertised budget presentation on the county's website, if you'd like to see that for yourself. The projected value of one penny in fiscal year 15 would equate to about, almost $22 million in revenue. And each penny change equals approximately $50 on the average tax bill. You all know that on March the 4th, the Board of Supervisors advertised a tax rate increase of 2 cents higher than we are currently, which would be about $1.10. And we are very appreciative of the county for having taken that action because it does allow the budget conversation to continue. It's been talked about quite a bit in public, about the additional state revenue that we're anticipating. I think there's been some confusion around what the dollar amount is for that. Of course, it's still being considered. But the difference between the House budget, which is 28, would equate to $28.7 million more for FCPS, and then the Senate bill would have $30.8 million for us. So, I know there was a number that was talked about in public quite a bit of $37 million, I think I heard that number. There's absolutely no possibility of a $37 million. It has to be probably somewhere right between these two numbers. And Susan, I'd like for you to add kind of what's happened over the weekend, because it looks like we're still going to be some time from getting a state, a state budget.
That's correct. The General Assembly was scheduled to complete the session on Saturday, but you all probably heard that they weren't able to reach a decision on the budget bill. So, they will be, they will be reconvening on March 24th. And just one additional information on the Senate side of the budget. It does also include a little bit of additional funding in addition to 30.8, because I think we've also heard the number of 32 million on the Senate side of the budget. But the difference between the 30.8 and the 32 million is there is $600,000 for a specific initiative that will be going into our grants fund. So, it is not available to help close the gap for our general operating funds. And then, the Senate also increased sales tax slightly from the governor's proposal. And at this stage, we feel that we need to monitor sales tax receipts a little bit more closely. So, we have not included that incremental increase in the sales tax that was included in the Senate's version of the budget bill. And that's why we come down to the 30.8, because I think you are going to hear from the community that the Senate bill was at $32 million.
Okay, the next slide. As we contemplate, and I know one of the key questions that has been discussed is whether or not that additional $27, $28 million, should we take it off of the ask that has been presented in our advertised budget of $98 million? So, I think for that conversation, you know, we have to go back and revisit where we've been. We also have to think about what's ahead. And I'm going to do both of those things right now. We're going to talk about those prior actions that have been taken over time. And the current budget, the impact of the current budget with regard to our schools and our system, and then what are our future financial challenges. I believe we've approached, you know, I certainly understand, like everyone around the table, that our county does have significant challenges that they, that are being faced. We're a fast-growing county. There are needs all throughout the county as a result. But I believe in terms of representing what are the true needs of our school system, I believe we've done that in our fiscal year 15 advertised budget. We could have asked for 8%. That was really what our need was, 8%. We knew, in prior years, we had asked for the full amount, what we needed, plus salary increases and that kind of thing. And then, we negotiated back from that. We didn't do that this time. We didn't start with 8%, recognizing that at some point, we're going to negotiate back from that number. I believe we approached this process with integrity. I think that we've represented for seven, eight months, we've been visiting with our community, our stakeholders, and we've been very honest about what our true needs are. So, as I lay out these next few slides, it is, it is my, I intend to, this coming, the 18th, to continue to represent the needs as has been reflected in the advertised budget that you all adopted just recently, recognizing that there will be continued conversations about the state revenue. Will the county Board of Supervisors weigh that into their decisions? Likely they will. I think that's up to them to do that. I want us to maintain consistency and integrity around the way in which we've talked about what our real needs are. And so, it is my strong recommendation that we stay the course and move forward and continue to represent what we think are the needs of our school system. And in light of that, it's important to talk about the things that we've done prior, prior to this fiscal year 15 budget. We've continued to increase class size, even in the area of our special education classes. We've done a number of program review processes, and I'm going to talk a little bit about some of those programs that were, have been eliminated over time. Compensation actions, there have been quite a number of compensation actions. We've frozen pay. We've not had a step increase over the last five years, but just one time. We've reduced contract length for quite a number of our employees, including psychologists, counselors, you name it. But over 3,500 employees have been affected by those contract length reductions. And then, more than 1,450 positions have been eliminated. And so, people say, well, that's all been counter, you know, counterbalanced by growth. No, not at all. In fact, as I visit with community, if we had not been in a cost-cutting mode for the last five years, today, we would have 1,450 more positions throughout our system doing the work of serving children. But because we've been eliminating and tightening up, we are down 1,450 positions. And I'll talk a little bit about how we're exacerbated, that's going to continue in the current fiscal year 15 proposed budget. And of course, we were able to get by as a result of having some short-term stimulus money from the federal government, the ARIA monies. And then, the VRS rates were pushed forward, you know, or delayed, and that helped us a lot. I don't have to explain that to this board. You all understand that quite well. Examples of real programs that were affected, eliminated, redesigned to cut costs, I won't read through all of those, but you'll see that, you know, we've, we've cut a lot of the different programs over time. And the last one, we have affected assistant principals, clerical, custodians, and central departments in prior actions. If you go to the next slide. And again, that's just talking about fiscal year 15 reductions that impact. We're going to go into some real examples. And this, we're not talking about prior anymore. Now, we're talking about what's represented in our current fiscal year 15 budget. And so, we're going to give you some real examples of how significant those reductions are and how they do impact specific schools. These are real elementary schools in our division, and this is an elementary example, looking at School A of less than 400 students with less than 10% free and reduced meals. Then, School B, which is 1,100 students with 70% free and reduced. And again, we could take any specific school. We just wanted to give you some high-level examples of how significant we believe these effects are of the cuts that are currently reflected in fiscal year 15 budget. And you'll see that particularly with class size coupled with changes to needs-based staffing, those coupled together reflect or create conditions where the first school will lose one teacher, which is 6.3% of their overall staff. On School B, they would lose 4.6 teachers, which represents 5.5% of their staff. Then, you'll see it's important going down on the small school, the losing of an assistant principal by one half. So, they would go from a full-time assistant principal to a half of assistant principal. Coupled with the reduction in school-based technology specialists by half, that's been a very difficult cut to those small schools. I'm going to talk about that more as we move a little bit later on in the budget conversation. You'll see the clerical, how that's affected both, the instructional assistants, custodial, and then the total reduction to school-based positions for those sample schools. At the middle school level, again, we took three different types of schools depending upon size. The first would lose 1.4 teachers, which represents about 2.4% of the teacher scale positions. Moving on down, again, because it's a small middle school, it has the same cuts that the small assist, elementaries would have to assistant principals and custodial staff. And moving across, you'll see that we're relatively consistent at the middle school level as it relates to how we're affecting class, you know, classroom teachers and their reductions there. And then, this is the high school. And again, the percentages are somewhat similar in that a small high school will lose about 3.8 teachers, and one of our larger high schools will lose about 5.7. But you'll see those percentages around 3% for both the middle school and the high school. But if you'll flip back to the elementary just real quick, I want to remind you, we hit elementary schools, I mean, because they, the class size increase coupled with the needs-based staffing and how so many of them are relying upon those funds, you know, that we've had, we've had, you know, it's been a big hit on our elementary schools, the current cuts. I've often said, and you all know, understand and agree, but I think it's important for this conversation to note that even once we get through fiscal year 15 and having an adopted budget sometime in the near future, we are still not done. We have significant challenges that we're going to be facing ahead. So, as we contemplate, you know, our, what we're expecting or what we're asking of our county, and we're asking a lot, we know. But we also have to be cognizant, cognizant of the fact, the cuts we've made to this point, but then what we also know's ahead is very, very important to this conversation. Our student enrollment will continue to grow. We're going to be by 2020 over 200,000 students. The mandatory rate increases for VRS will continue to go up in fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 19. We still have a structural deficit in our budget, has not been eliminated. So, every year, as we contemplate year imbalances and our reliance on those year imbalances, there's certainly a challenge. And a little bit later, we'll show you an actual fiscal forecast. Employee compensation has got to be a priority. You know, I believe that we need to be at the top of the scale, and I know you all agree in terms of our competitor or surrounding districts, we need to be at the top of those, of that analysis. We need to be very competitive. We're losing ground. Our step increases need to be consistently funded. Our health insurance rates are concerning. I believe there, you know, we continue to project increases with healthcare costs, and that's something we're going to continually be challenged for. We have so many unmet infrastructure needs, and my goodness, and this is just tip the tip of the iceberg with regard to bus replacement. We're way behind there. In fact, the Gibson study is, the Audit Committee talked this morning, you know, one of the things that the Gibson study talked about was the age and the replacement, lack of a replacement cycle for our buses. It's a significant concern for us. Maintenance, we have all kinds of studies that talk about, we're behind on our ongoing maintenance. Our computers, you know, we have to have a replacement cycle for our computers. Currently, those aren't funded, and those need to be, we need to make sure we have up-to-date equipment and computers and software. And then, when we talk about program needs, we have a lot of program needs. You know, you all have seen, you know, we need to look at alternative programming for our students that are high at risk. You know, we need to look at our reading programs. We certainly have concerns around preschool and the unmet needs there. I think we could go on and on. But we do have the ability to continue to be best-in-class system, to continue to innovate. We will need resources to do that. This backward regression with resources will not provide us the necessary resources, I believe, to continue to provide to the, respond to those needs. These are just a quick kind of future fiscal financial challenges that we have ahead on one page. And these are tentative, and I think to some extent conservative, estimates. And that is looking at enrollment growth, how that will continue to affect us year over, year over year. The Virginia retirement system rates, those are based upon the actual value, so we don't know what that number would be. So, I think that's very conservative, the 25 million. If we fund employee step increases, I think those two probably are very conservative because right now, I think it's 41.7 for this step. But just to give you a picture of the financial challenges, so assuming we want to continue to respond to some of the needs we have around compensation, our structural deficit, which will be 49 million this next year, and just enrollment growth, we're showing a projected shortfall of 134 million in fiscal year 16. Okay? So, it just shows you the challenges we have ahead. On the next slide, you've heard me say time and again, because I've had folks say, well, why didn't you just cut some programs? Why didn't you cut elementary strings? Or why didn't you cut the foreign language at the elementary schools? Or why didn't you cut this, that, or the other? Athletics, whatever it is. Over time, as we continue to cut and cut and cut, we get to a place where we do have to look at student programming. The face of our school system will likely change in the coming years. It will likely change. But I believe it's incumbent upon us to do that in a way that's thoughtful, that we have engaged the community in a way that they have a say about what our schools look like. So, I believe it's, you know, important for us to, yes, we need to be thinking about what we look like in the future. I think our strategic planning process will help move a lot of that thinking forward. But I think it would be draconian, and I hope we don't have, find ourselves in a place where we have to overnight cut student programming. In addition to that, I believe it's incumbent upon us to make those decisions and not the Board of Supervisors. And I know in the past, you know, they've criticized us for putting those programs out there as the Washington Monument kinds of things, those things that we weren't really willing to cut maybe, but just kind of put a lot of pressure on them. I think we've caught, you know, consciously made a decision. I remember some of our work sessions in the fall with you all, you know, we consciously and very purposefully said we're not going to start, cut student programming. We're not going to put anything on this list that we did not and would not seriously consider cutting. But moving forward, I think we do have to think about what we look like into the future. And likely, it would change our student programming. So, our approach has been a shared approach. You know, we recognize that we weren't going to get an 8% increase to cover all the challenges that we had ahead. So, we engaged thoughtfully our community. The budget I presented to you all on January the 9th was not developed in isolation. It had the benefit of countless stakeholders having a chance to look at it and give us feedback and helped us shape it. And so, with that, you know, I met with principal groups numerous times, met with teacher groups numerous times, and the budget I presented on January the 9th to you all had the benefit and of lots of great stakeholder input. Was it painful? Absolutely. But I think with that being said, I think it's very, very important for us to continue to show our budget as a true reflection of what our system's needs are and continue to work with our Board of Supervisors as we can to continue to champion for our system moving forward. So, assuming we get a 5.7% increase to the transfer, you know, how would, would I think it'd be best for us to use the 27 million? It's exactly the way I presented on January the 9th. On January the 9th, I said, if we do get additional state revenue, if I had known we were going to have additional state revenue, I wouldn't have cut as deeply as we had to cut in the current budget. So, assuming a 5.7% increase and we have additional 27 million to allocate, I would recommend, and this would be later in the process, that we would restore the monies or the fees that would be charged to students for AP and IB. And I talked about that from day one, saying that was something that we really need to put back in. Our elementary class size increases, we'd like to restore those and not increase our class size at the elementary level. And that's due to that analysis that I showed you earlier. We also believe we need to restore our needs-based staffing because it does hurt, those two combined, I think, affect our elementary schools much more significantly than it did our secondary schools. And then, we'd like consideration for a reserve for small schools so that we could go back in and add some additional support to those small schools where we, we've hit them with class size, but we've also hit them, kind of, they got a double whammy, if you will. I couldn't think of a more professional term. But essentially, they got hit real hard. And I've heard, I've heard it from elementary principals, they're very concerned. And they were, they had a place at the table, but just didn't think about it. And I didn't either in that process. And so, they've asked for, as we get further along, if we're able to, could you restore at least some of that support so they could have additional administrative support there at the school? So, those would be the ways in which I'd recommend that we use the funding. Now, again, it's very, very important for our public and for, you know, I think to restate something you all know, and that is, this is only if we get the 5.7%. If we do not get 5.7%, then the 27 million will have to be used to potentially offset any additional cuts to the system. And that's how this 27 million would have to be utilized. So, this would only be if we get 5.7%. If, if it's anything short of that, the 27 million would have to be used to mitigate any additional cuts to the system. And we would not be in a position to restore these items. And again, while it's not, doesn't seem to be talked about quite a bit very much in public, and I think that's unfortunate because I do believe there's a strong understanding of, of these challenges. But the reason we asked for 98, 7, 98 million from the county, this was not a number we just pulled out of the air. This wasn't a number that we, we said, hey, let's just, you know, let's, I don't know, we just want to ask 5.7%. That sounds like a good, good number. No, we tied that specifically to things that were outside of our control. The enrollment growth, the retirement rate increase. The enrollment growth, the retirement rate increase, and by the way, the county funds their retirement pension fund at 93%, which is even over what's required for them. We're just getting to 80% with this amount. The structural deficit, you know, we recognize that we've got to address those structural deficits. The county did address their structural deficit in last year's budget. Ours continues. And so those were how we got that $98 million. We said these are unique, this is a unique circumstance. This is a year beyond, you know, we haven't experienced this before in previous years. We've had some huge cost drivers outside of our control, and we need your help on these items. Anything else that was done in the budget, and that's funding the, the 2% mid-year increase, the funding of the health insurance rate increases, those were kind of outside our control as well. The step increase, which we've talked about, those were all funded in our current budget by making some very, very difficult cuts. Okay? So when there's conversation around the step increase at the county level and others, we took cuts in order to fund that through our budget. We've asked for them to help us with these significant, significant cost drivers. And I believe that, that concludes the PowerPoint presentation.
So our intent is to have a two-part presentation.
Yes, two-part.
And before we go to the second part, I did see Mr. Moon raise his hand, and I want to see if your question is germane to this before we go on to the next step, or do you want to wait until the second presentation?
I could wait.
You can wait, okay. Because we, our intent is to have a discussion following that second presentation. Ms. McLaughlin.
Just quickly, based on what Dr. Garza said, what occurred to me when we talk about what's going to happen to our student programmings and what will the face of Fairfax County look like going forward, I just wanted to share with my colleagues that I think one of the things we need to be doing as a board is to have this kind of conversation about budget cuts and increased needs and funding in the context of what's happening in the Washington metro area, our WABE guide groups. Because I think that for our Board of Supervisors and our public, they will be much more appreciative and understanding of where our budget demands are if there's a way to say, you know, look, we're not doing this in isolation, and if you look at our surrounding school divisions, they're having the same need of, let's say, 5% to 8% increase annually in their operating costs, then it just doesn't look like we don't know how to manage our own money. But without that context, we will continue to battle this, you know, public relations imaging. And so what struck me as a parent in the public schools was, as Dr. Garza talked about, what will we be able to afford here in Fairfax County? Well, I can tell you, as a county resident, I'm going to be very upset to live in one of the wealthiest jurisdictions and find out that if my home is in Howard County or Montgomery County or Loudon or Arlington, we'll continue to have quality programs in our public schools, but Fairfax County can't. But we need to have those kinds of comparisons so that, I think it will provide greater strength in this dialogue. Right now, I feel like we're constantly just talking about what we do in isolation, and it makes it harder for people, and even harder for us as a board, to have that kind of thoughtful discussion.
So we're going to have a discussion like this, so I am going to let Ms. Schultz speak, but then the, the wider discussion among ourselves, I want to postpone until after we have this. But Ms. Schultz, please go ahead.
I just, I just want to be careful of us getting dragged into the comparisons with surrounding jurisdictions unless we're talking about a similar jurisdiction. And the problem is, is Arlington County has a commercial tax base of about 57%. So that's the reason that they don't have some of the funding challenges we have. And so, you know, I mean, while that sounds like an interesting comparison, it's not really germane. I mean, they don't have the student size population we do. I mean, it's not an apples-to-apples, and it's almost irrelevant. We need what we need based on our student populations, based on our mix, our, well, and Loudon, I don't know, I don't know what the challenges are out there and where they're, what their balance between commercial and residential is, and what they're, you know, what they're participating. But it, at the end of the day, it, it isn't, we don't, our, our story is no more compelling because Arlington funds differently because they have a commercial, a higher commercial base from taxes. The end of the day is, and we don't, I don't even want to go to Maryland because Maryland doesn't fund education the same way we do. So the, the bottom line is, it's Fairfax County, it's, the, the tax base is, you know, very heavily residential, and the student population is growing, and the capital needs based on the Infrastructure Finance Committee, you know, looks like that we should be moving some of the maintenance over into the operating side. Those are the issues that are germane that we have to stay focused on because I think if we start going outside the scope of what we need and what the compelling picture is here, it, we start to lose focus. So I just, I would hope that we keep it very strategic to what the play of field is for what is germane for the arguments within Fairfax County.
Okay. And in the interest of keeping focus, looks like we've got the, we've pumped, primed the pump here for discussion later, and I'm going to turn it now over to Ms. Quinn.
Before we start on the next set of documents, I wanted to just point out, I think one of the best way to compare ourselves to other districts within the surrounding area really is the cost per pupil because that really shows the type of programs that the various jurisdictions have and the efficiency within each school district. So I think on the original advertised budget, it's not in this slide, we do show that comparison. And I, I think when you look at that, that really talks about the programs and the needs of the school system as compared and how much we're spending per student. And that includes more than just the operating fund, that's our grants, that's all the budget dollars that we use per student. So I think that's an excellent comparison to use.
I agree, Susan. And in fact, so many of you remember that chart because we've used it a lot over the last seven months. But if we receive the same amount of money per student or spent the same amount of money per student that Montgomery County does, how much does that equate for us on an annual basis?
We would have $340 million more than what we currently have in our budget.
And mention the capital budget while you're at it, please.
That excludes the capital budget, but I could get you the capital information, but I do not have that with me. But you're correct.
They get $100 million more than we do, more than $100 million more than we do, and they have about a four, 75% of the buildings that we have. I'm just, just saying.
Okay, Mr. Velkoff, on the next document, I really appreciative of the staff for putting this together. We'll continue to refine it as we need to. We just wanted you all to have those key questions right at your fingertips. So as you're asked by a constituent or supervisor that you would have this right at your fingertips, and this is also posted for the public, so I think it's a great resource tool for our public as well. So you'll see that there's a good number of major questions answered in this document. The beginning of the document on page three, you've seen this before, but it's just in one spot. It's the county schools budget comparison. When you look at the fiscal year advertised budget for the county and our advertised budget and how much of their county's budget, where does that look like for us? And you've seen this before. Did you want to highlight any of these, Susan?
Actually, before we get into just specifics, I wanted to kind of highlight the format of the document just slightly. So any key points on each of the topic is within the box at the top. So if you just wanted to read the bullets about what the key points are about that particular topic, it's within the box. If you're interested in additional information, some of that information is going to be on the bottom half of the document. So that's how each of the topics are laid out on a particular page. So only other piece, I think I wanted to clarify, I know there was some confusion when we compared the FCPS and the county, on the county side, when we said county operations, and then we said county's advertised budget. The advertised budget is the overall county's budget, which includes schools' transfers. When we talk about county operations, that's strictly county's direct expenditures and their transfers only. So we gave you two different numbers for the county budget increase.
Ms. Evans, I think you had a question specifically about this chart?
I did. It was just a clarifying question. In that very first box under FCPS, I, I wasn't understanding where it says assuming a 2% increase, .18% and then assuming a 2% transfer in 27, .93. I'm not understanding what we're being told there.
So currently, yeah, currently, our advertised budget has an increase of 2.4%. If we were to only receive the 2% transfer without any state revenue, our budget would actually go down as compared to last year. If you, if we received the 2% transfer with the additional 27.2 million from the state, our budget would go up slightly less than 1% as compared to last year.
And I guess that's where I'm, I'm not understanding it because the 2% transfer is what, equivalent to 24 million, right?
It's 34.
34. I'm sorry, 34 million, and then, so I'm trying to figure out how that equates to .18, and then if we have 34 plus 27, how that becomes .93.
You have to...
Clearly, I'm just not understanding what this figure is telling us.
Because our budget includes revenue other than the county transfer, and we had a decrease in our one-time funding available, and we were, our structural deficit, and we were projecting the decrease in state revenue, that's just our overall budget increase. So what we were trying to really show in this box is, if you look at the county's direct operations, their budget next year is going up 4.65%. If they were to give us just 2%, even if we applied the state funding of 27 million, our overall budget increase for next year would still be less than a percent as compared to the county's budget going up 4.65%.
Susan, let me try.
So it's the increase in county revenue, but that's being offset by our structural deficit. So that's why our overall budget's not going up as much as the county revenue's going up.
Dr. Garza, I think it's going to try to attempt it.
I'll pretend I understand what you just said.
It really has to do with revenue. So for example, the 2.4% budget increase, that's our fiscal year 15 budget, and that's how much additional revenue is going, going to take to fund that current budget, fiscal year 15 budget, right? And that budget includes some increases, like, like compensation. It also includes some decreases where we've cut. If we only get 2%, that means we're going to have to go back in and change the bottom line.
Let me make one statement that might help. Remember, 1% of our budget is 25 million. 1% of the transfer is only 17 million. So I think there's probably a little bit of confusion. This is the change in our budget, okay?
Okay.
And when we talk about the 2%, that's an increase in our transfer, which is a separate, different amount.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't want to get bogged down. Ms. Schultz?
No, I'm not going to get bogged down. I'm just, Ms. Evans and Ms. Quinn, assuming the 2% transfer, what that really, that line is really what the county has advertised. Correct. So we, the fiscal advertised budget that's above the 2.4, that's our number. And assuming a 2% transfer, that's what the Board of Supervisors has currently advertised. That's where we are right now. So if you take, take, Ms. Evans, really, the starting position of where the Board of Supervisors are puts us at a .18% decrease in our overall budget. If we happen to get the 27 million in addition from the state, our overall budget with, if the, if the, if the Board of Supervisors stay exactly where they are with their 2% as advertised, if that carries all the way through to the transfer and the 27 million, our entire budget's only going to go up .93%. I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I'm hoping I decoded that.
Yes, you just did. I think you did. But the reason that's important is the comparison to the county, right?
Right.
Under similar, under the similar budget configurations, which is the next column.
Okay, let's move on. That was very helpful.
And kind of continuing this conversation around the comparison between the county and us, that also is summarized, these next three pages, that first page, page three, four, and five, all relate to that same, same question, actually, page six does as well. But on page five, I do think the pie charts, you've seen it before, but I think the pie charts are very informative on this same, same issue. So I know that Mr., someone had a question, but I just wanted to make sure that you see those pie, pie charts as it relates to this conversation.
Okay, I'm going to intervene. Mr. Moon, you've been very patient. You want to speak, I believe.
Just to be fair with the, with the county's, county's budget, for the comparison purposes in the slide number two, if we were to get full transfer request of 5.7%, meaning that we'll get additional $63 million a, a, from county executives' advertised budget, if we put that in on our chart, what would that show in terms of percentage of budget increase from our side?
So it would be about 3.4% because if we're, if we're gonna, assuming we would get the 5%, 5.7% transfer increase, plus the additional 27 million, we would have $27 million to restore our cuts, meaning our budget would go up by about another 1%.
Another 1%. How would that affect on the county side? The county would have to take $63 million or less on their operating fund side.
I, I think that depends on how the county would fund the 5.7% because it could be funded without impacting the county's disbursements. It could all be generated through revenue, which means their disbursements can still go up 4.6% if the full 5.7% gap was funded through additional revenue.
Again, just to be fair, just to be fair to our county side, you think we could show that as well? The how that would compare? If we get the full, if we get full 5.7%, how would the effect on the county side with a tax rate increase or a tax rate remaining the same?
The tax rate would go up, but it would not change their overall budget of disbursements because it would be generated through revenue. Only, only time you would have an impact on the county's disbursement number of that 4.65% is there was a reallocation. So some of, they are generating savings.
That's why, what I wanted to say, if they kept the tax rate at the same rate, they would have to reallocate their budget to us to fully fund us, 5.7% request, how would that would affect their budget increase number? It should be, it's got to be much lower than 4.65%, correct?
It would be, but then there could be a lot of assumptions. So would, would we assume all of the gap would come out of there?
Let's say that all of their gaps would come out of their, their budget.
We, we could add that number in there.
So I wonder if I can short-circuit this and say that this is an action item that we want to capture here, that, that we would, one second, Ms. Schultz, that we're going to add to the chart the impact of actually receiving the 5.7 from the county plus the 27 million, and how would that chart in those two columns?
Yes.
Those two columns, look. Ms. Schultz, you have a question?
Just, Ms. Quinn, I just want to go back to one thing you said on, on the six, on if it all came from revenue, it can't all come from revenue because the advertised tax rate is only two pennies, and at $63 million, they can only get 40 million, $42 million. So it can't all come from revenue.
You're, you're correct. So there is that flexibility of 44 million currently advertised.
Right.
But I think if I understand the question correctly, that's why I think we're saying there are so many different assumptions you can do to calculate what that increase would be.
Right. Because on this side, I, I think what Mr. Moon is saying is, it's showing... Right, because on this side, I think what Mr. Moon is saying is, it's showing that they're going up 4.65%. And what would our increase be if we got the 5.7, and I heard 3.4, but if some of that came from revenue, even if 44 million came from revenue, you'd still have to come up with another 20-some-odd million, so that would drop their 4.65% down a little bit. So you're trying to get the side to side, like if we had 3.4% overall increase in operations, what would the counties, you know, what's the side by side? Our 3.4 equals their what? And, and I, if you're saying, well, assuming 44 million comes from new revenue, there's still 20-some-odd million that has to come down, then that 4.65% is gonna have to come down just a little bit, but you're saying there's too many iterations for you, and maybe that's...
That's why I'm trying to get some clarification, and I think what I heard Mr. Moon say is, he wanted us to calculate the county's increase in budget if the gap of the $63 million all came from county's current disbursements through their savings.
That's one. And another is, tax rate going up by two pennies. So two different numbers, just wanna see.
And do we assume the two pennies would all come to the school system?
It doesn't matter how we get additional $63 million, whether from the, just additional revenue, or their, their allocation. But, you know, my gut feeling is, my gut, my very rough calculation is, our rate will go up by another percent, to about 3.5%. If they kept the tax rate the same, theirs could go significantly down from 4.65% if they have to reallocate from their budget, their operating fund to us. If, if the tax rate went up by two pennies, their increase could be about 4.4, 4.3%, 4.2, 4.3, I'm sorry, 3.2 or 3.3%. That's my rough calculation in my head, but I wanted to get those numbers from the expert.
I think we're, we're going down.
Yep.
In a lot of detail here, so. One thing I wanna say here is, our goal in the end is that we have a board discussion about whether we believe any change, we, whether we are going to ask for any change to the presentation that's gonna be made on March 18th. And so that we have time to make that discussion, to have that discussion, you know, we have another hour allocated, you know, we'll, we'll take as long as it takes, but our goal is to finish by one. So can we...
And we can move a little further, we can move faster along. We won't touch on every page.
Yeah, Ms. Schultz, is it urgent, or can, can this wait?
I'll just sort of summarize my, my question, but we do need to get through all of this. The one piece that I think is missing in this presentation, and it's sort of the overtime, is as new revenues have appeared in the county, simply based on the increase in assessments, there has been a different assumption as to how those naturally occurring new revenues are then split between school and county. And I know that we have, we are only including FY 2014, and I think that's part of the issue over time, and I know you have the pie charts, which are, which are very helpful, and because people have asked me, well, going over time, how have those revenues been split? And I think it would be very instructive to go back, sort of pre-recession, how that basically has, has been split. But I don't know, but anyway, you don't have to answer that now, obviously you can't. But that is historically an important piece of information that is missing in that, because as we again attempt, cuz you've shown the slides going forward, the assumption, what is the structural deficit going forward? And this is part of, part of the, the inability to answer questions going forward. Is the assumption going to be that we present our needs, and whatever revenues are shared with us are not simply based on need?
We'll do the best we can. I think where the difficulty comes in is, the information is not presented in a consistent way.
Yes, I know.
On the county's documents, as well as ours, over time.
I know.
So in order to structure some of this information, to take it back to pre-recession years, I think might take more time than we might anticipate.
And I think another answer to the question, another way to answer the question, is look at the transfer increase history.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Which that, that has been provided, you know, and has been in our citizen's guide.
That's right. Our, our benchmark page, I mean, I, you can go back 30 years, and that has been consistent, which is, which is very helpful. But again, sort of as we kind of go forward, if, if, you know, the response is, well, just cut until you don't longer have a structural deficit, part of our challenge is, well, does this mean, it's sort of like, and what do we base it on going forward? Cuz I find talking with the community, you know, younger parents will say, well, if we're continuing to grow in student enrollment, you, you're sort of like a house built on sand. You have no idea. How deeply then do we cut in order to get to what we're being told is, well, you are just, you are just doing too much? And then specifically going forward, well, how many positions, how many thousands do we go to?
Right.
If we're having a student enrollment? So anyway, as I'm looking at that, we can't answer that today, but as I go out into the community, that's sort of the, sort of the large question that people ask, well, do we ever get back on firm ground, or we just never do?
Okay, so I've made a note of a second action item that we potentially, that we review the allocation of new revenue historically, including pre-recession, with the understanding that there may be some impact to their time.
And not getting way down in the weeds, cuz I understand how hard that is. But that is, I find with younger parents, they say, well, we'll never stabilize.
Right. Okay, so let's, let's roll forward here.
I didn't get that one. I think we can then go to, you'll see the state budget update on page seven, we've kind of talked about that, there's a lot more detail for you in this particular document. On page eight, that is that detailed one-page summary of our budget we provided on January the 9th to you all, except this shows the benefit of the additional $27 million, assuming that's where we are. So you'll see how we've allocated money to restore the cuts that, in those four particular areas that we mentioned earlier. On page nine, the one-time funding, the structural deficit, I'd like for Susan and Kristen to talk about that just briefly.
What we have on this particular page is what we have used as one-time funding to balance our budgets. So as you could see, back in 2010, we used about $28 million in beginning balance, but that was also the year that we had additional federal revenue. So we had the stimulus funding in 2010. That funding then was reduced in 2011, so we had to make up the reduction in that federal revenue, and that's why you see the increase in the requirement for that beginning balance in 2011 to '53. And then we had to somewhat maintain that until we got, went into 2012, 2013, we had some additional VRS reserves that we were creating and using, and then down to 2015. Even though we are requesting the county to fund our, portion of our structural deficit in 2015, we will still have $48.5 million going into 2016. That is one-time funding.
And then this all kind of relates to, you know, salary lapse, year-end, you know, it's all represented in the year-end budget. And how, how comfortable are we in creating a budget that represents less than a two-year, you know, we're really right under a 2%. Most organizations, I think through audit principles, expect you to have a lot more than that. Around three months of operating, for an example, two to three months of operating is traditionally what audit practices look, look at. Keep in mind, our monthly compensation cost, just compensation costs monthly are $180 million, okay? That's salary and benefits. Salary is about 130, 140, it's kind of in between there. So just to kind of put it in perspective, that's what our monthly obligation is around salary and compensation alone. That, that's not our other obligations around, you know, fuel, electric, and all that. So I think to put it in perspective, you, you have to keep that in mind. I would, I would caution us from ever wanting to be in a place where our year-end balance was even less than, I mean, I think 2%, it should be a reasonable percentage point for us. Anything less than that, I think we get ourselves in a place where we might not be able to make payroll. You know, budget is a projection. A budget is projection, and I think we have an obligation to our public that we manage those dollars very efficiently, but not to a point that we're dangerously at risk for not meeting payroll. And anytime you, you know, the salary lapse and the conversation about our salary files, all that ends up in our year-end balance. There's no hidden money. So any unexpended dollars shows up in the year-end balance. And so I want Susan to talk about pages 10 and 11, cuz I think they're very important. You know, how's, how's our year-end balance compared to the county's year-end balance? Every organization of our size would have an ending balance. So if you could talk about the comparison here.
Sure.
On page 10.
As Dr. Garza mentioned, I think there is a lot of questions about how we do our salary projections and salary laps, and just to reiterate what she just said, any funds available through any of our accounts, whether or not it's salary accounts, utility accounts, fuel accounts, they all fall into what we considered, what we call ending balance, available ending balance. It's all going into that ending balance. Any difference between what we budgeted, what we received in revenues, and what we experienced in our expenses go into ending balance. So we gave you a comparison chart to the county and the school system at the end of 2013, just to kind of show that it, it's very comparable when, in terms of dollars, but in terms of percentages, we are slightly lower than the county because of the size of our budgets. So if you kind of look at, and what this shows is, these amounts here are the difference between what we budgeted and what our experience is, okay? So when you look at the county's side, the revenue variance on the county was positive 30 million. We were short by nearly 8 million. Total disbursement variance, county 63, schools 135. So you get to an actual ending balance, and this is prior to any commitments. County's at 94, schools 128 million. And then you have your year-end commitments. These are your undelivered orders. This is where you see the flexibility reserve for the schools and your schools and projects carryover. The schools, the flexibility reserve, that's just one-time money that's, is available in our school accounts and in the flexibility that's carried over from year to year, so you will not see those amounts budgeted in your approved budgets, as we adopt the approved budgets, cuz it's one-time funding that is being carried forward to provide flexibility. So balance after commitments, we're very comparable. Both organizations, about $56 million. But when you compare that to the direct expenditures, and we say direct expenditures because we have accounts called transfers out, that we go from the operating fund to, let's say, summer school. On the county's side, they have significant amounts that also gets transferred out to the other funds. But when you compare that just to the direct expenditures, the $56 million, it's 2.3% of direct expenditures on the school's side, as compared to the 4.2% on the county's side. That's your first bullet below the chart. But to add transfers out, cuz there, that is a true operating activity for the fund, when you include the transfers out, FCPSS balance after commitments was 2.2% as compared to the 2.9% for the county. Okay? So that's what the $56 million represents. And then we have what we call year-end adjustments. These are either recommended by staff or through budget amendments from the school board or the county board that spends that available balance on some of the needs at year-end. So some of the examples of that 11 million for the school system included spending, funding for major maintenance, the turf project, and some of those other items. So after the year-end adjustments, we had $45 million available. We set that completely aside to help balance the 2015 budget, cuz we knew we had a beginning balance requirement going into 2015. So that was set aside. On the county's side, they did provide some compensation bonus to their employees and some of their other adjustments, and still had a balance available of 15.6 million that provided some flexibility in their budgets going into 14 and 15.
But they made quite a number of additional, they made more one-time expenditures, of course, of 28.8 million, which is really what your year-end should be for, those one-time costs, but we were not in a position to do that. They also, although our reserves are different, we only have two reserve funds in our entire budget. One is this kind of emergency, kind of flexibility reserve for kind of those catastrophic things that happen that you might not anticipate, and oftentimes, it's never expended and it's rolled forward. And our textbook reserve is the only other reserve fund we have. The county actually has quite a number of other reserve-type funds. I don't know the exact number, but they have quite a few. So when you see that they don't have very much right there, that's because they have other reserve-type funds that we do not have.
And, and, you know, county, the organization, the size of county, for sound financial management, you want those reserves. That's what the rating agencies are looking for. That's, you know, they need to have that flexibility built into their operations in order to meet those unforeseen emergencies. But when you look at, as Dr. Garza mentioned, at the end of the year, these funds should be used for your one-time expenditures, but we have been using it for recurring expenditures to balance the future year budgets, because revenues just have not kept up with some of our increased costs. And I wanna mention just a little bit about salary lapse. Again, we mentioned that any savings through that salary lapse, whatever that percentage may be, falls into that ending balance. And some of the changes that we have made, or some of the adjustments that we have made, includes, it's on the bottom of your chart, and I'm gonna focus on that second bullet. Last year at mid-year budget review in 2013, if you recall, we recognized some savings cuz we realized through actual experience that folks being hired were coming in at a salary slightly lower than what we had budgeted. So we recognized that savings in 2013, and we built that into our 2014 budget. Same thing with those other bullets you have there. We are making slight adjustments as we monitor our actual experience and making adjustments into our salary accounts. But again, anything remaining in our salary accounts go into our ending balance.
Thank you. I wanna recognize Mr. Moon for a question.
I just wanna be clear, for year-end balance on the county's side, that, so in addition to 20, almost $29 million out of $56 million, the county also used another, close to $12 million out of their year-end balance. Is that correct? So they have used, you know, basically $40 million out of 56.
Correct.
And we have only used 11.6 out of 56, and we needed to save the money to come up with a beginning balance we needed to have by 2015.
That's correct. And, you know, we have to also keep in mind, we, we still have a structural balance, and that's why we need to save our year-end balance in order to meet our future needs. On the county's side, in 2014, majority of that structural balance was addressed through increased revenue. So when you have that ending balance, it truly is available for them to meet one type, one-time expenditures at the end of the year.
I just wanted to see the difference between how they use the year-end versus how we use our year-end.
Absolutely.
Good, thank you.
Okay, moving forward. Mrs. Reed?
Is there anywhere in this presentation that we compare the number of employees, the county's side versus school's side? Because I think that's pretty compelling as an argument also. And I don't know where it would go, and we don't need to spend time on that, but I do think that we could make that point.
I've actually sent that analysis out, so we have done that. So we know what the answer to that is, so we could add it to this.
Sure.
If you exclude all federally funded employees that we have, because they're categorical, they can only do certain things, just those that are funded through general revenue, it's about 70-something percent. it's about 70-something percent of the employees if you add them all together is, so it's interesting. But if you add, look at total employees, it's about 67% that we have as compared to the county.
Okay. Ms. Schultz.
Just a quick follow-on to that. We have about 66% of the total employees. What is the, are, is that an overall, is it equivalent payroll? Because percentage of employees, if a lot of them are lower paid, then is it?
Full-time equivalents.
No, but what's the dollar amount of the payroll, like monthly?
Dollar amount of payroll? We would have to probably, yeah.
I mean, that's available to us, we just have to look it up.
Because then it, then that may, may complete the picture even more on the side-by-side, is not only do we have 66% of the overall employees as a dollar amount, because that's the Paul Harvey rest of the story, what's the payroll to payroll?
And I, and I think the other point I think to make here that's relevant is the fact that how people-intensive and how we've really cut, cut, cut on the other things that we could cut. Now we're over 88% of our budget is personnel-related, either through compensation or benefits.
Yeah, and the numbers will probably increase slightly, because as I was thinking about this, the numbers we had provided were full-time equivalent contracted employees that we have FTEs for. But if you think about it, we have food service drive, yeah. Yeah, food service, I'm thinking bus drivers, but I said food service workers, but both. Both the bus drivers and food service workers are not included in our total position count. So we actually would have a higher percentage than what we've been sharing. And only other item on year-end balances I wanted to share was on page 11. We do give you some historical information about how the school board has spent our year-end balances back to 2009.
Very good. Do you want to touch on anything on page 12, or can we move on? Okay. On page 13, there were, been questions regarding, so what has the county done around compensation? You know, it's caused some angst over time compared to what we've done for our employees. You know, there's been a lot of conversation around the 2% mid-year scale adjustment. So if you'll see at the top part of this page, on page 13, we're very comparable if you look at us over time in terms of what we've done for our employees as compared to what they've done for their employees. It has been different year over year, but when you look at it since 2010 to today, we're about at the same place. And then down below, you'll see what happened year over year, the actual specifics of what happened. So I don't know if I need to go into any of that, but, you know, the answer is that question that keeps being brought up on that. On the next page, page 14, this has to do with a different question, and that's regarding teacher salaries. There's been some analysis done where oftentimes applying a basic mathematics formula to this does not. It gets much more complex. And so this is important because it looks at what is the average salary reflected in the budget for positions? And the reason it gets difficult when you do just look at a campus budget or even the school-wide budget, you look at how many positions and you divide that into the salary file, it looks different because of the way in which we allow schools to trade in positions. So I'm going to, I'm going to let you describe that, because I know you can describe it a little bit better, Susan.
So when comparing the budgeted number of positions, you need to compare it to the budgeted salary dollars, because that takes into account what's budgeted. We allow schools to trade positions, and when a school trades a position, the actual expenditures show up in the position that they traded for, but we don't actually adjust the budgeted number of FTEs. So in that case, one category will look like the salaries are higher than they should be, and in the other case, lower, depending on what positions they're trading in and out. Then the other important thing to remember are vacancies, because that also impacts the expenditure experience. So if we have positions that are vacant, the salary actuals will be lower. So when you divide those by the budgeted number of positions, it's going to understate the salary. So it's really important, when you're doing this analysis, that you use the approved budget for salaries and then the same approved budget number for positions.
It doesn't change the overall budget, okay? It doesn't change the numbers. Because, for example, if a school trades in positions, they still have to stay within their budget. But they're using those dollars in the way in which they feel is best for their school and their needs at their school level. So that flexibility, I think, is important to a certain degree. I think we'll work, work through that over time. I think they're going to have, unfortunately, less flexibility over some of this as we move forward. But I think this is really important. So I want to make sure everyone understands what we've done here. These are the true average salaries for any position we have throughout our system. And if you look at that basic math in terms of numbers and do that math, it's never going to give you that inaccurate picture.
And obviously, you could probably already tell, the first column are the budgeted dollars, and the second column is budgeted positions. We don't quite have the headers on there, but that's what those two columns represent, with the average salary in the third column.
Okay. We've also been asked about students per school-based position as a question. So if you'll see page 15, and we're going to go, there's further pages that really answer this question. But it's important to see how we compare on the WABI guidelines to surrounding school systems. And it's been talked about that we have 8.2 positions at the school-based level, you know, per student. The answer to that is yes. But you have to go a little deeper to answer the reason why. And by the way, that, you know, is pretty comparable to our surrounding other school systems. So if you look at the bottom, you'll see how many students per position, division-wide. I need to point out a nuance. We have functional supervisors. There's one in the entire school system, but it's shown on there. So just want you to be aware, there's somebody out there that because of their supervi, you know, the supervising other folks, we have someone that's being considered a functional supervisor. We have one. No, it's not me. These are school-based positions, school-based positions, okay? But I think what really illustrates the answer to the questions on the next page, on page 16. These are actually pulled from, from our program budget. And this is what's used to allocate staffing to schools, okay? This shows an average of what that ends up looking like when we apply our staffing formulas. I have shown this to number supervisors, and I think they finally understood what this means. This is how we get to that eight adults per student at a school, because we have a principal, assistant principal, counselors. And by the way, in some cases, we have more than one counselor, because some of these are required, by the way, by the state in the, in the standards. We have the classroom teachers, obviously. We have a reading specialist. We have an advanced academic resource teacher. We have a librarian. In some cases, we have two librarians because of the formulas, the requirements. We have five physical education, general music, art teachers. We have an instrumental music teacher, a half. We have instructional assistants. We have kindergarten assistants. We have office personnel. We have 4.5 custodians. We have nine special ed teachers. In many cases, they go into classes and support students. We have 2.5 ESOL teachers. Nine special education assistants who are essential, because they also go in and support students in classes or in their resource classes. A language speech teacher, an ESPIT, which is our school-based technology specialist. And then we have a halftime technology support specialist. So if we don't like that we have eight adults per student, then we have to go and say, okay, which of these positions are we going to reduce? All of these support instruction. But just basic math applied to it does not illustrate why these positions are important at the school-based level. So we hope this helps answer the question about why that, you know, applying a simple mathematic formula to what's, you know, a complex issue. Students per classroom teacher, how do we compare there? You'll see that we compare favorably to other, other surrounding school systems. The top part is where we are now. The bottom part is where we will be, assuming that we don't have to cut any further than what's in our current fiscal year 15 budget, which represents 731 additional positions cut. You know, if we don't get that revenue, we'll have to cut some more. But just wanted to show you where we are. This is also nuanced, because it's much more complicated than that, because students don't come to us in even, even groupings of 22, 23, 24, 26 students. So a couple of things affect it. Every school, it looks different. And you, I've sent the charts out to you this year by school, so you've seen what that looks like. It's affected by students at those particular schools. It's affected about how, by the way in which the principal has allocated his or her staff. And so those are important. If they have, we also have, it's important to note that we do not fund as a system classes of less than 17. So if you see a school, in one of your schools, we have quite a number out there that might have students under 17, but it's because they've determined to use additional resources available to them at the campus level to fund additional positions. For an example, Title I monies, you know, that kind of thing. Now, we're working through that, because we need to make sure that they're really utilizing their dollars effectively. I've already been meeting with principals about this. And then the second, the other thing that is nuanced that affects this is we've made a policy decision as a system, and I think it's a good one, that we do not staff any less than two teachers per grade level. So you're not the only teacher teaching a grade level. So in our smaller schools, sometimes you will see a smaller class size than we would have in other schools, because they're small. And we've said that no one teacher will be an island. If you're a third-grade teacher, there will always be another third-grade teacher, no less than two teachers per grade level. So those are all nuances that affect these ratios.
Ms. Schultz, you had a question on this point?
Dr. Garza, on the, going back to the issue of school-based funds, those are non-appropriated funds for buying down the class size that they may choose to buy down below 17. Is that something that you're contemplating, you know, basically a directional statement as superintendent to say, you know what? Unless you can provide some compelling reason, otherwise, we, we actually are just, we're not going to do that, because the return on investment, you know, for the students, for the teachers, simply isn't there. So unless there really is something compelling, that it becomes, you know, because I'm worried that if it's a fluid, we'd prefer that you not, or what, that there's going to be a lot of, then the exception becomes the rule?
I think we can consider it in the future. I think some of the regulation we're working on right now around class size and the allocation of staffing reserve will get us there. And I think, I think the timing will be right in the future to do that. But I do believe, assuming only the cuts that we currently have, this will change, and you'll see class sizes dramatically change. Because you saw in the elementary earlier, the reduction in needs-based, coupled with the increase in class size, is going to force, they're going to have less flexibility in trading in positions to add this or that. So I think it'll happen, just because the cuts, I think, will force some of it to happen. You want to talk about the next page on 19?
Just to provide a little bit of clarity between page 17 and 18. 17 was students per classroom teacher. And then there was some questions about, while you show class sizes at 12 or 13, there is also another chart in the WABI that shows students per teacher scale position. So those will be more than your classroom teachers. Those would include your counselors and librarians and all that. So we just, I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity on the difference between those two pages. And then on page 19, we just provided you some additional information on our school-based staffing formulas, on how we actually calculate staffing, because I think there are a lot of questions about how the formulas actually work. And, you know, one of the things that's very significant is what we have when we have rounding, because we always round up to the next teacher for the classroom teacher. So sometimes, you may be just above that number, and we'll get that extra teacher. But when we change the formula, you may lose a teacher. But if your rounding is in the middle of that range, when we change the staffing formula, you may not lose a teacher, because you may still be slightly above. That's why I think there's a lot of nuances on how staffing is calculated for each individual school. So we wanted to share a little bit more information on how that is calculated. And then what's attached at the end is a report of elementary class size averages as of October 31st. There was some questions about what our class sizes are. So we wanted to provide you this information altogether with the other reference materials.
And that concludes really a walking through of this resource document. We'll add additional information to this in this same format, assuming it works for you, the summary at the top, more detail at the bottom. On the, just the kind of the burning questions that continue to be asked in the community, we want you to have those answers at your fingertips. So with that, we'll, that concludes our part. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Hang on, folks.
And how are we going to structure this discussion? I'll remind folks that we're due to break around 1 o'clock. So is there a particular question to be posed? Or are we just going to kind of let people? Yeah, I'm trying to guide the discussion here. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mrs. Reed. Yes, our intent here, I know that one of the reasons, the key reason perhaps that we're discussing this is some board members wanted the opportunity for the board to have a conversation on whether to go forward on March 18th with the presentation as the superintendent brought to us and we approved, or whether the board chooses to alter that in some way. So this discussion will be basically so that we can gauge the board's sentiment here about whether we are going to make a change, direct the superintendent to make a change. So I have a list here. I'm going to, before opening up the discussion, I am going to editorialize on everything that I've seen. And to me, this is as transparent as a coral reef in the Caribbean on a clear summer day. I am very appreciative of the huge amount of information that's been provided to us. And I think it really, it helps us out a lot. Okay. So I'm going to go first to Mr. Moon, be followed by Mrs. Strauss, then Ms. McLaughlin, and then it looks like Ms. Evans.
You know, I'm going to echo Mr. Verkup's statement that this information, you know, being presented to the board like this has, it does not have a precedent. And, and I really appreciate your working overtime over the weekend to provide us with this kind of information. We need to not only talk with the board of supervisors, which is going to come up next week, by the way, and also for the public to understand where the superintendent is coming from with her, her, you know, position of continuing to request full funding of 5.7%. And I am willing to, I am prepared to stand by a superintendent's request for the full funding request of 5.7%. Having said that, I do have one minor question about compensation increase on the county side. From my little understanding of, you know, county's presentation from county executive, you know, presentation to the board of supervisors, I think they set aside their spending, county executive proposed to spend about $22 million for compensation enhancement for the county side. And we are $41 million, correct? And, and we are saying that that's about 2.5% increase on our side. And are you only saying that it's only 1.3% on the county side? Because I know that their, their market rate adjustment could be, it may only be 1.25% as presented. But they are using large part of their compensation enhancement funding, proposed funding to address some other compensation issues that when we know that about two-thirds, you know, putting, you know, county and school system together, about two-thirds. you know, putting, you know, county and school system together, about two-thirds of employees belong to FCPS and only one-third on the county side, and about 88% of our compensation, our budget goes into compensation and benefit, and much less on the county side, they're 1.3%. I'm, I have a hard time believing that overall compensation enhancement on the county side, when you just look at their current compensation budget plus what is going to be on the county executive proposal, that it's only 1.3%. It's got to be higher than that. That's...
Yeah, and we could look at the details in more, in couple, get you some more details. But what that represents actually is a 1.3% increase to the employee. The 2.5% is what the increase for an average increase of a step to our eligible employees. So, the 1.3 and 2.5 represents increases that employees will see. They're not representative of percentage of their budget. So, we could look at it from that perspective and provide you with that additional information.
I'm also interested in seeing from the budgetary point of view, you know, our compensation budget and how much, what's the percentage of that going up versus on the county side?
Yes, yes.
And I, you know, again, using my, you know, my rough calculation in my head is, it's got to be very comparable.
Yeah, and, and we could look at it just based on...
That's on page 13 is what you're speaking of, and we had to separate general county employees from the public safety employees for the county because it's been different for them on an annual basis.
Mr. Moon, is your question answered?
Well, we'll have to get, get some of it for him, yes.
Okay. So, there's potentially an action item around that question? Okay. So, next, Mrs. Strauss to be followed by Ms. McLaughlin, then Ms. Evans, and then Mr. Stork. Mrs. Strauss?
Okay, first of all, all of this information in one place is fabulous, and thank you very much. The one suggestion, you know, the benchmark page, which is the stable page, and it has been stable in our budgets for 20, 25 years, obviously, that would be a whole lot to put in there, but a link, I always find when I encounter people who are, who are really looking at long-term comparisons, I don't know if on the county side if they have a stable page, but it is, it is good to at least show people that we have it. It may just be a hot link because it's way too much to put into this. But again, highlighting that we have a stable page that we have included for years, that is just very instructive to a lot of people.
We could at a minimum include our benchmarks page in the packet that, what it shows is our growth in enrollment, our growth in budget, number of employees, and it's over time.
Because it's a single page, and I give you all, kudos, over time, because that has truly been, been stable. The other piece is a, include in the pie chart, the split in revenues minus any change in the tax rate. In other words, what is the split band? And we have to be careful with that because I, it, sort of it is what I find, people will say, well, if there is a natural increase in revenues without a change in the tax rate, why is it that we would ever expect to get anything more than a small part of that? I mean, that, that's been kind of lost in our conversations, and the reason why, for example, when we even mention $148 million in revenues just being generated by an increase in real estate values, is, and the reason why from our perspective, why we even mentioned that, is in previous years, there was sort of an understanding that that would be split 50/50, or at least there would be a different split than what has been proposed in Ed Long's budget, and why? See, that's, but that has been, you know, an interesting question, because I find the younger people looking at this go, well, is there, on what basis would you assume that that $148 million would be split other than what has been proposed?
You know, and I think splitting the revenue is really a new conversation that we're having, and I think it probably stemmed from the fact that I think when we looked at, because of the current economic situation and because of the limited revenue growth on the county side, I think, and this is why I think earlier I said it's really difficult to go back to past years, because it wasn't presented this way, and it's, it's not consistent, and it was really about us presenting what our needs are and how our needs are funded. I think it's really a Board of Supervisor decision, whether or not it's our increased tax rate, reallocation of their current budget savings. So, the discussion has never been with additional revenue because I'm not sure 52% of the, their disbursement budget is the right number either. It's just we present our needs, and it's up to the Board of Supervisors on the funding provided.
Right.
So, because it's hard to say, you know, increase in this tax rate was due to increased funding for schools. It's really, you need to just look at the overall revenue increase for the county, and this low revenue growth environment.
Right, I know.
How can that be allocated so that we meet both the county and schools' needs?
Right, I know. But as I say, even in Mr. Moon's letter to the editor that was published in The Post, some of us who've been around for a long time certainly understood the basis of that letter. Other people who have not seen how we've worked together to, to essentially share, appropriately share revenues either with or without a tax increase, it has been shown differently, the discussion has been different. So, I don't know how we should, we have to be very careful at the same time because the county has, they have needs, and I would not want us to get into the role of trying to play line item on their budget. That's inappropriate for us to do, absolutely. They have their needs, and they must discuss that with the county. So, I would never want to do that. And I also have to say, one, one year, many years ago, Dr. Dominich and I presented a view to the Board of Supervisors that did not go well, where we went back and looked at, at the percent of the overall funding from the county. We were looking at a, back in the 19, early 1960s, which was a very different county, where schools were taking over 62%, 63% of the entire county budget. But it was a different time and a different place, and so, we also have to, have to be cognizant of that because there are county needs, and we, as a county, as an urban county government, the county is, is providing services of the city, which goes back to the whole Dillon Rule, the whole, you know, frustration with the county. So, they have needs as well, but...
Right. I'm going to step in and ask if you can wrap this up.
Yeah, I know. But anyway, that's, that is the piece. But anyway, the benchmark page, the available revenues, I will come back. In talking with our General Assembly people, they are counting on the state school boards, all of us, to pressure the General Assembly to finish their job, and they are truly expecting all of us, I suppose, to the VSPA and individually to lobby them to finish their budget, or we're in real trouble.
Okay, thank you. Again, what we're trying to drive towards here is determination among ourselves whether we are going to ask the superintendent to change anything before March 18th.
My vote is no. This is good if we want to provide a little more information, but I think this is good.
Thank you. So, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Evans, then Mr. Stork, and then Mrs. Smith. Ms. McLaughlin?
It's always nice to start off with the positives, so I want to echo that my exact notes said, this is the best packet of consolidated information related to FCPS operating budget that I've received since I joined the board two years ago. And I do hope, as tempting as it is today with the limited time we have, we not get drawn into the incredible amount of information that's here, because I actually think this is what we're going to need from April 29th to May 22nd to be making some strategic budget decisions. So, I'm going to exercise discipline, Mr. Velkopf, and not get drawn in. But I want to go to the fact that I was one of the key board members who asked for today's discussion, and I am very much struggling with where we're going here. I appreciate what Dr. Garza said. I actually share Dr. Garza's concerns and perspective, and probably most of my colleagues here. In the best world, it would be great to get our 5.7% from the Board of Supervisors, additional state funding, and start to make this school system whole. Where I'm struggling is that if you enter into a budget conversation not being mindful of what the other side is saying and who we are trying to find the compromise to, in the end, get the funding we need for the system, I'm worried that they, that they will not hear us and help us figure out how to bridge the gap. So, I will reiterate to my colleagues that if we talk about equity and fairness, there is, first of all, the starting point's a problem. The Board of Supervisors don't see the starting point of 148 million additional revenue, they say 120. I'm going to go with there rather than, you know, debate the 148, because that's how the county executive presented it. If we went with 128, and we all agree that traditionally we make up 52% of the transfer, and that's appropriate under this annual circumstances, we would be looking at, they should have awarded us $62 million. They came up with 2%, which is the 34 million. This problem started with the multi-year budget that they set almost, you know, two years ago, where they arbitrarily, in my mind, said 2% to schools. I think that is arbitrary. I think that it should have been based on, look, we're forecasting that we can afford somewhere between 2% and 3% for schools, but how they came up with 2, I think is the very first problem that has brought us to today's discussion. But the bottom line now is, how do we go from here to April 29th? And even if we accepted that we should be getting 52% of the increased revenue at 62 million, the delta then is $36 million that we feel they did not, in the proposed budget, bring to us. But we, you know, we're asking for 98 million. So, even if we wanted 98 million, but the county's saying based on its, its budget forecast and what the monies they've got, the question becomes, you wanted us to at least be, treat you fairly and give you what we're giving to the rest of the county, then the question does become that 36 million. That's going to be the one penny, maybe the two pennies, but to not acknowledge the 27 million that is going to be coming from the state, I very much worry that they will say, here's our fiscal reality, we're not going to be getting any more added to this budget than $44 million, and, you know, trying to figure out how they're going to continue to pay their 2% they want for their employees, because they've only got 1.3% funded right now. They're trying to figure out how to fund that, how to look at our, you know, our presentation that we're basically saying, you know, we want you to, you know, bring forward $64 million more. That's just not being in the same room with them, and that's, that's just, I guess I'd really hope to hear from my colleagues that I understand what we want and feel is right and deserved, but the question becomes, do you just want to say, you know what, we're not even at the negotiating table with you? Because if we go forward and this budget on March 18th does not acknowledge the additional state funding, I think in the end, they're going to, they're going to basically make whatever decision they want to do, and it's going to not only impact us for FY 2015, but it's going to impact us for 2016 and going forward. And, you know, maybe we, we give it our best shot. So, my, my one request here, Mr. Velkopf, that I'd like to have considered as an action item is, I disagree with Ms. Schultz. I think we could actually be the most convincing on March 18th if we go in and say, dear Board of Supervisors, understand we're not arbitrary in asking for 5.7. That if you look at the surrounding jurisdictions, at what school systems face in the Washington metro area, the annual increase in their budgets tends to be 4%, 6%. This is what's been in the last five years and going forward. It actually puts us in the company of, this is how, how you have to fund public schools in the region. It's not at 2%. It's not at 3%. Your typical costs are going to run you much higher than that. At least then they understand they can disagree with us, but we don't look like we're also operating in a vacuum of saying, well, we just kind of thought we should be able to spend 8%. No. What, what are the other jurisdictions doing in terms of keeping up with employee costs and things? I hope my points have been clear. I'd welcome anybody to say otherwise, but I'm, I'm very conflicted about what we're, we're faced with here.
So, I think what I heard is some advice to Dr. Garza about the way that she will present this information that makes it, puts it in the context, puts it in the context of the spending of other jurisdictions.
That's right, over the last five years and going forward, because I think it helps also the public understand, we're not just wanting money for the sake of money.
Correct. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Evans to be followed by Mr. Stork, then Mrs. Smith, and then Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. I do want to thank Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael for this. This is excellent information. I think this is something that, that we can all keep handy because that, it, it really shows us a lot that, that we haven't always seen before, so this is, this is great. And I also want to say that I think it's important for us to be having this work session as an annual event, so we can have a conversation before going to the Board of Supervisors in case things have changed, you know, and that's, that's something that I had advocated for before, and I appreciate that we have this and should have this annually. But to cut to the chase, I definitely want to keep the budget as is. I think it's critical that we go into the Board of Supervisors and ask for the 5.7%. We absolutely have got to have teacher raises this year. We have to have that step increase. That is critical to retaining our teachers. We also need, there, we have so many critical needs right now, and the 5.7% is, to my mind, a floor. We have taken into account the 27 million dollars that is in here. We have said exactly to the Board of Supervisors how we will spend that if we get the 5.7% as well as 27 million dollars. It's very clear in here. We haven't hidden that at all. And I just, you know, as far as the slides, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of all of this, but just on slide eight of the PowerPoint, we are looking at a school with 70% free and reduced meals, losing four and a half teachers, four and a half teachers at an elementary school that's got that higher rate of poverty. That is, if that's not draconian at a school like that, and that doesn't count, the instructional assistants, the clerical, the custodial, so we, that is a critical need. You know, this is, this is something that we, we have really got to maintain, and really, that's, that's about all I have to say. I, I think we, we just need to stick with what we've got, hope for the best, that 34 million, the 2%, doesn't even pay for our state pension requirement increase this year. That one uncontrollable, it doesn't even cover that.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next is Mr. Stork, to be followed by Mrs. Smith and Ms. Schultz. Mr. Stork?
I support the information that's presented. I think this is the best I've ever seen in any budget discussion I've had for the last 10 years. This is truly exceptional work. Thank you very much, and thank you very much. I think the data, the information that's here goes a long way towards at least knocking down some of the questions and concerns people have had in the past about what we're doing and how we're doing and why we're doing and how it compares to others. Those are all, I think, essential elements, essential hurdles for us to get across. Will it remove the doubters in full? Probably not. There's, there's always other things that can be discussed and looked at and challenged, but hopefully we can get us to another level, which is where we're going. I mean, we're just trying to build on this. So, I, thank you very much. I support asking for the full funding that we've asked from the Board of Supervisors. I think ultimately, we'll have other discussions, but until the state tells us what their number is, I think we're, we're silly to talk about anything other than what we need. In fact, we could be in a situation where we'd need more if the, if the budget is held hostage and, again, they decide to do something different than what we know so far. So, I, I think the core number, key number, to me, has always been what our cost per student is, and so, if you talk about cost per student, you don't have to talk about typical costs in the area. We're already way underneath anybody else around here with, with a few exceptions, and I don't think the Board of Supervisors or anybody else in Fairfax County wants to compare themselves, per se, to those exceptions. I'm not going to name them at this point. So, let's focus on the core issue, which is cost per people. That's what I talk about with my constituents all the time. You know, we are obviously very efficient. Look at what we do for such the same amount of money, and look at our reputation, blah, blah, blah. But we all know part of that issue... But we all know part of that issue frankly has to do with, we have a lower free and reduced meal population than Arlington has, or Alexandria has, or Montgomery County has. We know that's part of that issue. So I don't want us to be, totally talk about we do things so exceptionally well. Well, we do, but we don't have quite the same population challenges that they have, but we are heading that way, and we better be making sure that we're prepared for those kids because those kids are coming whether we like it or not. And I think having to set them out, a prescription, if you will, is a mindset that we need to get the Board of Supervisors away from. I understand the fiscal reality for them. They have to start somewhere. We start somewhere as well, but that mindset has to change or we will not be able to continue what we've been doing as a system. So while on the information, I would like to see on the discussions we had on the slides for the different schools, the different templates they used, I think you need to show maybe total school population, total teachers and staff population. I don't think that was on.
Is there a real number?
Yeah, I would show that because it does, I mean, it really, it takes away from your case a little bit. I mean, if you have 100 people in the school and you're losing two, people are going to go, okay, that's 2%. No biggie, right? But I think it's important that we at least give context to them.
Show actual.
I think it's an educational piece that we can use. I mean, I think the key is, what I saw in this is it breaks, it really breaks a lot of the veil of ignorance or misunderstanding that we've had, I think, about so many different issues. Again, if people read it, it's a lot of information. How do we get them to read them? How do we get them to, them, meaning the Board of Supervisors is our primary audience. Obviously, the state delegates and senators are also important audiences, but the core, how do we get them to read and understand this stuff? I think the core of this isn't so much what we're doing now or what we'll be doing when we meet with them. I think we have to have individual Board of Supervisor follow-ups, the same level, same number, same type that's been done before. Thank you all very much for that. I'm more than willing, in fact, I'm going to schedule an appointment to see Jerry Highland. I'm going to schedule an appointment to see Sharon Boliva because I want to talk with them about this information and answer, ask, and address any issues, concerns they have. Now, we have a window now of just a few weeks before they get into public hearings. I want them to be far more aware and knowledgeable about that. I'd like to see us do that even before we do the formal presentation because it might change the discussion itself. Because the formal presentation sometimes is political posturing on all sides, if you will. So if we can get some of the, kind of, if you will, remove the veil of ignorance and misunderstanding ahead of that to some degree, I think we'll have a better shot at having the kind of rich discussions and questions, and I think we'll all be winning as a result. The final point I would make is the budget meeting coverages. I don't know if there's been discussion, and I'll go back to my Chair and Vice Chair. If we have agreement, or this, kind of collectively, we're ensuring that there's a school board member at each of these BOS budget discussions, I think it's essential that we have one or two people there. I think it's important. So if there are questions or are concerns or things, even misinformation, we have a chance to either respond at that time or respond later to correct it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Next is Mrs. Smith, then Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. I don't usually like to repeat, but wow, you guys really did a great job with this. I fully support the superintendent going forward with the 5.7% increase. You know, I think in the past, sometimes you get accused of putting out a budget, and it's the perception of, well, you just put it out there, you know you're not going to get it. And I think if we back off now, it feeds that perception about the budget. I think Sandy said it well. We really should have asked for more, but this is a good, strong request, and I think we need to stick to it. And, you know, one of the other things I've been thinking about lately is the way the budget gets talked about at the county level. This idea that they fund the county and then they fund the schools and blame the schools for the tax increase. I think the dialogue would be so much better if the county said, we're responsible for funding the services in this county, and that includes the schools. And when we look at the total resources we need to fund those, this is how the tax rate goes up. You take the part of the county where, what they say, 25% have kids in schools, and you throw them under the bus with the rest of the, to the rest of the county. And if we could just change that dialogue and say, for us to meet the needs in this county, this is how the tax has to change, and not blame it on one side or the other, but have a comprehensive dialogue, and maybe we can work to change that with the supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Ms. Schultz?
Well, I, once again, I find myself in a unique position following Ms. Smith because I agree with 98% of what she just said. Until she got to the point of the assumption that funding schools necessitates an increase in taxes. So we'll hold that one off, but everything else you said is precisely what I've been saying all along, is the conversation has to change. We are not participating in this and communicating effectively. And for your time on a Saturday morning, Ms. Quinn and Dr. Garza, I am profoundly thankful. I thought it was a robust conversation, and we're seeing now the type of work product that I think begins to move the conversation forward. These are the kind of data points that take hyperbole and rhetoric and, with all due deference, Ms. Strauss, going back and showing what we did 20 or 30 years ago does not solve the problem. It is where we are. It is what is germane and real in the moment and where the priorities are. And when you boil it down to a smaller play of field on what is really at issue here, then all the peripheral stuff goes away and we stop the high noon at Main Street. This is leading from the front, and I'm so pleased to see us moving in this direction. I mean, I think there's more that this can continue to be refined and pushed over time and frankly simplified. And that was one of the things that I was seeking on Saturday morning. So I'm going to ask just a couple of questions, if you'll bear with me, that are some basics, and it's a little bit what we were talking about. So the notion of the 121 million being a little tiny bit of a fairy tale in that it's really about 148 million because 27 million is encumbered. What I would like to see is, we have encumbered funds too. And to acknowledge that there are encumbrances that are really akin to the VRS payment. So if you will, those are the internal non-negotiables because they can't just peel $27 million off the top and say, that's not in play because those are encumbered funds. Well, okay, so if we're going to compare and we're going to talk on the same field of play, we have encumbered funds and obligations going forward that are in the non-negotiables. So I think showing our encumbrances side by side is really important because somehow that gets lost somewhere down in the conversation because that's just a subset somewhere down below, as if they really aren't encumbrances, and they are. The ending budget balance, I think what I'm looking at on Page 6 is what we were talking about Saturday. Is that correct? Is the bottom of Page 6? So when it says total ending balance, is that?
Page 10.
Okay. It's 6 of the PDF, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Six of, oh, no. Okay.
Anyway, it's this page, right?
Well, yes, but that's only one year. So if you look at the, if you look at the county page.
Oh, that is Page 6. County's multi-year budget projections.
Okay, so can we go to the bottom line down there of total ending balance? So am I looking across, and I see 236, 209, 182, 127? Is that their carryover?
Yes, but if you look right below that, they have managed reserves and other reserves. So they do, and this is where I mentioned earlier, that the, just the sheer size of the county, I think it is best financial management practice that you do have certain managed reserve accounts.
Well, what does managed reserve mean? Because I seem to recall, like, oh, we have hidden pots of money. So, okay, so again, you know, comparing side by side, I'd love to see a side by side of the reserve and the carryover of each, and then also as a proportion of the total budget. Because the other thing that we lose is that our budget actually is bigger than the county's budget.
That's correct.
While they only, I mean, they transfer 52%, but it's not only 2% bigger, which would be 4% bigger. It's plus the state, plus the federal. So to have an understanding, again, of the narrow focus, the strategic focus of the complaint of the carryover, can we look at a side-by-side comparison, say, it is natural in an organization so that we don't imperil, you know, paying public employees payroll to not cut it to the penny, to have, and this brings in the salary lapse question, of we have a 2.1% lapse, and that is to allow us, over time, to make the payroll. But I think that if we do the side-by-side, Dr. Garza, and we show, and I can't see, it's too big, I can't see up above which fiscal year we're talking about. So 11, so we have 11 through 15 up there. So 11 through 14. So in fiscal 2011, you know, you had an ending balance and a carryover of this. FCPS had it this. As a total percentage of their budget, you know, it's X percent. Now you're boiling it down to brass tacks and saying, are we basically, you know, cumulatively over time, really on par with our ending balance with what the county's doing on their side as a percentage of the total dollars? So I'd like to see the total dollars and the percentage as the next step. The 2%, you know, Ms. McLaughlin, you used the word arbitrary, and I don't know why, but it was like an aha moment for me. Where did the 2% come from? And this is the analogy of the big rocks, is if it's 5.7, or 8, or 6, or 4.2, whatever it is, did, has the county arrived at the 2% after all of their big rocks went in and whatever was left was the scraps that came off the table? Was it that they said 2% because they thought, well, we know what our budget obligations are, so it was sort of developed organically within the process? I'll just ask my questions, and then you guys can answer.
Ms. Schultz, if I may. That may be a political question, and I don't want it to be directed at the staff. I think it is worth a discussion that we should have with the supervisors, and I really appreciate Mr. Stork's point, that we might want to come to grips with where that 2% came from at the supervisor level and whether we could look for agreement on a way of identifying a number that actually would reflect our needs, which is kind of what Supervisor Cook was getting at at one point. So I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine. And then kind of the last, the wrap-up on this that I have, you know, we receive a lot of questions, you know, and consolidating the big hits into one document is great. I don't know how many budget questions the board supervisors ever get. I don't recall seeing a document that's similar for them, and I don't think that we actually ever ask any questions about their budget. So it's something that we may want to consider. And it's not to turn the tables, per se, but it is to ask some pertinent questions that are, have a value center. And the reason I say this is, I do share a consternation about the seriousness with which our budget's going to be taken if the 27 million stays in. And I do it for the express, I say this for the express reason, that whether that's down in the weeds or whether we think we're going to reallocate those monies or not, I think what they're going to say is, oh, you're going to get the 27 million, and it's as if they're going to stay in the clouds on that one, and that's the one area, they're not going to come down in the weeds. Like, there's a lot of questions that come down in the weeds, but that one's just going to stay floating up there, you know, at a 30,000-foot level, that you're getting 27 millions coming off top, and that one doesn't delve into the weeds. And I say this in particular because of everything in the county supervisor's presentation by the county executive, I found it notable that the term VRS did not come up. So there was not any acknowledgement either in the county executive's document itself nor from any of the supervisors about the VRS payment. So the 34 to 39 million starts at the 5 million in the hole argument just never, it just was vapor there. I mean, I know that all of my colleagues who were sitting to my left, you know, sucked that vapor in when they saw the numbers, you know, because they were losing their breath. But we can't fix all the problems that exist within this budget dialogue in this one budget cycle. This starts to fix it. This starts to change the conversation, this document, and what we can do going forward from there. But I'm worried that if the 27 million stays in, that the value add of doing things like this will be lost. We will fog up our own play of field by just leaving it in there and being tone deaf ourselves. So this is going to be a dance, you know, it takes two to tango. And we, putting this out there, I think, is a tremendous sign of good faith, that we're listening, that we're willing to, I don't know, try to be more transparent and weave the arguments of all of the priorities of county residents together more cogently than I think even maybe the county executive's presentation did in some respects. But if we've heard, unless you are willing to, as an individual elected official, go through their budget and, you know, X out 60, well, 98 minus 61 is 37 million, or if you flip it the other way, they've said they'll give us 34, so 98 minus 34 is 64 million. If you're going to go and you're going to find $64 million worth of cuts, because even if they give the two pennies, like I was saying earlier, even if they give both pennies, if they raise it, and if they raise the taxes this year, you know, for darn sure, next year's an election year, they're not going to raise it next year. Whatever it is, it's going to be next year. So if they raise it two pennies and we get all of it, Parks and Rec doesn't get any, you know, Security Services don't get, police, fire, no one gets any of that money. If it all came to us, that's just 44, you're still at another 20 million. So who's going to go and cut 64 million out of their budget? So I'm just saying, you know, I have trepidation that I think if we do this, this is three steps forward, and if we leave the 27 million in, it'll be four steps back, and we'll wind up, you know, back in the hole again.
So let me just review where we're going. I know, Mrs. Reed, you want to speak. So we want, I just want to get a sense of the board here that we, if there's any sentiment to change the request, give an opportunity for that question to be made visible here at the table. Following that, in conclusion, I know that Mrs. Reed and I have some thoughts that we would like to put out as future things to think about. So we'll just very briefly speak about those things. So Mrs. Reed, did you want to speak to the question of the 27 million ask of the county? So Mrs. Reed, please.
Thank you. I have two points to make quickly that go, I think, to what we've been talking about. One is regarding our support for county citizens, and we haven't really talked about that. I noticed in their presentation, they say, oh, they spend 72 million on things that support the schools. And so since we've talked about comparability today quite a bit, I wonder if we've ever computed those things outside the K-12 mandate that we provide to support the county. And if we don't have the data, I feel that we should at least make that point. And if we don't have the data, I feel that we should at least make that point. So that's one thing, just quickly. And then, more importantly, I, I think, hearing the discussion, I think there's probably a way to continue to put out the information that we want, but maybe, maybe it's just, it's a summary slide at the beginning that kind of brings it to a very high level, almost like a USA Today, is what I think of, is something very simple, because there's so much information here, and I think there's probably a way we can say, here's what we've asked for, and here's, you know, what the state is likely to provide, you know, and kind of do it in a way that we don't have to do either or, we put it out there, here's, here's what we know. And, you know, and then maybe here's the ramifications, as we've discussed. But in my view, we need to have one more slide in here, and we've, we've all been looking at this now for quite a while, but as I sat, pretending I was a supervisor, a member of the public, I feel there's something missing here, and that is kind of the, the ask, the big picture. Okay, what, you know, what are we facing? What are we asking for? Kind of putting it there at a very summary, summary level. And I also feel, like two of my colleagues, that several of the supervisors have, have come out and said, look, you know, the math isn't working because of the state component. But again, I think we can address that if we put it on the summary slide, because there are trade-offs, where I think that's what we're saying here. And so let them make informed decisions based on those trade-offs. We shouldn't be doing that work for them. And that's my view on that. So I think there's a way to kind of, maybe it's nuanced, but I think it's a way to kind of put it out there. And to the last point, I would say that I really feel that we need to somehow, to Ms. Smith's point, be all on the same page, be all on the same team when we go into that meeting, because, you know, it doesn't, it won't help our case if we, you know, continue to go in and say, we have this and you have that. You know, somehow we have to get to this idea, we're all on the same team, it's the county budget, and I think we've raised a few key strategic questions that, that will keep it out of the weeds and keep it away from, this is mine and that's yours. You know, where'd this 2% come from, and is that appropriate? You know, with the additional revenues, what's the appropriate mix of these services versus those? I mean, I think perhaps if Steph and Dr. Garza, and maybe Mr. Velkoff and I worked on some of those strategic questions with the help of the board, that may help guide our discussion and start it off on the right foot, because I fear if we go in there and say, oop, we're standing firm, and, you know, you're over there and we're over here, I don't think that's going to bode well for us. So those are my comments, and I'll be quiet now because Mr. Velkoff has something, I think, to share that we've also been talking about, which is very relevant.
I'm going to wait on that one.
Oh, okay.
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
But in line with what Mrs. Reed just said, I think what the supervisors have, what we are giving the supervisors is basically three price points. There's the $125 million price point, which is the state money plus the 5.7% transfer increase. And so we've said, this is what we can do for that much money, and it means pulling back some of the cuts that are on the table. We've shown them what the 98 million price point is, right? So if they subtract the 27 million, we've told them what 98 million's going to be, and we've also said what the $65 million price point. If it's just a 2% increase from the county plus the state money, then that means that we're going to be making cuts that have yet to be shown. And that's their choice. I think we've done a good job of outlining those three choices for them, and, you know, we'll go forward from here.
Process question? Just, what's the timing for, I know normally this is presented to the board supervisors, but is it going to be posted, and is it something that would be available to them ahead of time? And therefore, is there an opportunity for us to, as individuals, to seek to, to have a conversation with them before our conversation next Tuesday?
The presentation that you've seen, I'm assuming you're speaking of the PowerPoint presentation. What, what I would be presenting to the board of supervisors on the 18th would actually be a different version than this. It'd be a little bit longer version, maybe more comparable to what you all saw on January the 9th, maybe to not, to that degree, but much more comprehensive, assuming you were talking about that, and not the resource document, is that correct?
Yeah, well, actually, I'm...
Or both?
Probably both.
The resource document is posted right now, and we'll add some additional things to it based upon the conversation today. I think the point that was made earlier about getting you all an up-to-date version as soon as we have that, maybe getting that out to supervisors, you might want to talk about whether you want me to send that out, or you all might want to even send that out to supervisors. But one part of the question is, when would the presentation that's going to be presented on the 18th by me, when would that be typically posted and available?
Pretty much right before the...
Is it typically right before?
Traditionally.
Okay.
We could do what we can this week to see if we could have it available by the end of the week, but it's, we're trying to get, that, that's going to be our priority this week, to get that presentation together, so...
And I took some good notes and some comments that you all have made about, you know, how we might want to kind of craft or, or shape that presentation differently, maybe, and so we'll take that into consideration this week as well.
Okay. Ms. McLaughlin? I think you answered the basic question, which is just the availability, and it's available now because it's posted with, you may or may not want to take exactly what we have now to your individual board supervisor member, but there's nothing wrong with doing that because it's, it's essentially accurate, it's going to reflect it generally. It may not be as, as, you know, contoured as you want it, but, and I, I guess my advocacy is, I think we, each of us should go, and I think we should take whatever this is, and if it's a day or two before the final version, get it, and personally email it, and then followed with a phone call to our board supervisor member, saying, we would like to meet with you before Tuesday, even if it's Tuesday morning, to have that conversation, we'd like to give you some background on this. And then you, then what they're hearing on Tuesday is a reinforcement, and it gives them a chance to actually think about the broader questions that we really want them to be thinking about.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin.
I, I absolutely appreciate where everybody's sentiments are. You know, the more information we can share with our board supervisors, hopefully it creates better understanding. But one of the things that I have shared with Dr. Garza, and, you know, I'm just sort of looking at this again, we're talking about two different documents that are exceptional, but they're all, they're, both of them, almost 20 pages each. Our board supervisors don't have the luxury of trying to run a county, and then they're going to go study this. It's just not realistic. And so I guess strategically, what I would, their, their staffs might, their, their might, they, Mr. Stork's editorializing is quite amusing over here. But as Mr. Stork pointed out, this is board member to board member. We're trying to talk from us to them, and, and quite honestly, if, if we follow Ms. Reed's direction, which is, let's all stand together, I would really like to see this boil down to one or two page, you know, bullet points of, here's what we want to cover, because there's 40 pages of information here. And honestly, I, I think that you could have a one-page fact sheet at least that says, here are the most important mission-critical points that every one of us needs to make with our supervisors, and I, I kind of feel like we're not there yet, and that, that would actually be, make us more effective. Just handing this over to them or showing to them, encouraging them to read it, will not help our dialogue.
I'm going to skip an editorial comment. I just want to see if there is any sentiment on the board to direct the superintendent to change the advertised, the request of the transfer increase. Is there any, there's one?
Clarifying question.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Reed had offered what I thought was a compromise. If we want to get all 12 of us behind this, she had said, if we had something like a cover sheet that says, because the General Assembly has not made any determination of any additional funds, our 5.7 remains on the table as it is, but we do want some acknowledgement that this, this additional funding may be, you know, a piece of the overall FY 2015 budget for FCPS to have considered. I mean, because otherwise, you know, I feel like I'm being put between a rock and a hard place right now, because I do agree with Dr. Garza in saying, you know, right now, we know we need 5.7. I agree. The question this all had come down to was, if we were getting an additional 27 million, do we now need the 5.7 still? And what I heard today is, we don't know that we're getting 27 million from the state yet. So I'm actually more comfortable to vote yes in what you just said, but I also think that the compromise that Ms. Reed asked, you get 12 of us behind it, is that you've got to have some acknowledgement that we are waiting to hear what the General Assembly decides.
Mrs. Reed, I know that, I, I saw a slide having to do with the fact, you know, some detail about the state of the Commonwealth's budget. Is there more that you think, is there something, I'm not quite seeing what Ms. McLaughlin's asking for, so I'm hoping you can help me interpret that.
Yeah, I, again, to her point, I think there's many slides in here that, that tell the story, but what I'm suggesting is one summary slide that, that kind of just tells that story at a very high level. So the, the numbers are there. Just basically what she just said, that's what I'm advocating for, is just saying, here's our ask, it hasn't changed, we're still waiting for the state amount at, at this, and, you know, you should know that any of the funding decisions will have significant ramifications and impacts, and we'll describe them in detail, you know, in the charts. But there's just, it's, I just, I'm afraid that with so much information and so many pages, that our message gets diluted and could be misunderstood. And I know there's at least several of them in the room that will be very upset and offended if we don't at least acknowledge right off the bat that there's another funding source out there.
So, Dr. Garza, I see you nodding your head, so do you feel like you have an understanding of what the desire is here, that you can respond to what you've heard and answer the concerns that are being raised?
I think what I heard was, to acknowledge in that presentation that there potentially will be some additional state revenue and how we would intend to use that additional revenue. And the answer is that, is yes. We can do that.
Okay. I have comments to come from Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Strauss. Mrs. Smith?
I guess I was a little confused about some of the conversation there, because my understanding from this presentation is, if we get that 27 million, these are the things that we will do with it, and those are things that are important to do. So I don't want to back away from this idea that the 27 million wouldn't be, get put, wouldn't get put to good use.
Mrs. Strauss?
In what is being proposed, in what we've seen today, is the money from the state would go back and begin to bite off the 96 million in cuts that we've already put out there. If we don't do that, and we simply take the state funding out of the $98 million ask, then we are left with not only the $96 million in cuts, but probably more. And the bottom line is, do we freeze staff pay again? And my answer is no. And that's why I think what is presented today, at least I am very comfortable with that. I do not want to freeze pay and back off of the step increase. So I think what's being presented today certainly represents what my ask would be.
Okay, Ms. Evans?
I want to stay firm on the 5.7%. I think it's imperative that we do that. Acknowledging that we know that there's state money, I think, is reasonable, the way we do it, but I do not want to decrease our request to the board of supervisors by that amount. We need both.
Okay. It's my assessment, from listening to everybody and watching the hands go up, that at most we have two, two folks that would ask that there be a change made, and I think I am seeing the remainder in favor of staying the course. So that's my interpretation of the sense of the board. Mr. Stork?
I think that sense is correct, but I think it's how you present that, because that's what I'm hearing from Ms. Reed, is I think we can, we can present that, it's not a take it or leave it, it's not like, you know, we want it all, this is, here's how we see this, and we know it's a continuum, we would like to utilize all the additional state money if possible, but we recognize ultimately the board supervisor gets to decide what that, what that transfer is. So I think it's more acknowledgement and show, and the continuum that that's on, and here's what, here's what that additional money will buy. I don't think it's an either-or. I think that's the point Ms. Reed is making, I think that's the point, I think it's been a unanimous conversation around here, a consensus about that it isn't an either-or, it's, it's a continuum.
Right. I'll offer the opinion that having observed the superintendent at many town halls, that the way that she will present this will be full of nuance and appreciation for the situation that the supervisors find themselves in, and will not be characterized by arrogance or intransigence. So with that, I just want to leave you with a couple of thoughts. Mrs. Reed and I have been germinating some ideas, and I think they're not quite cooked, but we want to bring, I think these are things that we are planning to bring forward in the near future, and I don't know if it will come through the forum process or as part of the budget considerations, and we'll work with the chairman to determine the best approach. But I'll give you a little teaser, and one of them, Dr. Garza has been talking about since October, and that is that we need to do some strategic budgeting with the county. Mrs. Reed and I, and I suspect that we'll not have difficulty finding support, but we, what we're thinking about is some kind of a joint board committee, perhaps with the IFC as a model, that really addresses what are the expectations that, that the county and the school system should have about expenses and revenue and so forth, because a lot of what we're dealing with here is, we really just haven't agreed on some fundamentals. So I, I think this is a piece of the process that we'd like to improve. I'm going to come back to my second point next, but Mrs. Reed, if you'd like to add a comment to this. Wow, I did that well then. The second one is, it's our view that a lot of what we're seeing here publicly is, I'll describe it as dysfunction in government, and it's not because of the people, it's not because of us, it's not because of supervisors, it's because of the legal frameworks that we're operating in, and we believe it's time to seriously change those things. So another idea that's germinating is the possibility of really taking a serious look at changing the legislation in Virginia, and changing the balance of power between the Commonwealth and the county, because the elected officials in this county, in my opinion, do not have the authority that they need to best serve the citizens of the county. So stay tuned. With that, Mrs. Reed, go ahead, please.
And I'll just add, and that's directly related to the point about how much of a return we get on our, our tax dollar, right? It's about 19 cents on the dollar. So when, when we heard that, I think that stimulated us to think about, okay, what can we do about that, because that's just not right? And that's the root of many of our problems, I think, financial problems, so...
Yes, I would say that the first idea that, that I floated, Supervisor Cook actually started speaking along these lines last week, and then to Mrs. Reed's point, Supervisor McKay was talking about the second point. Okay, so with that, this session is concluded.
And I think as, as our, did you want to talk about lunch, because we, you know, we are behind and we're...
We'll take a lunch break, and then come back at 2 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
And, and lunch is being provided by our Food and Nutrition Services program, and it's options that are currently...